All right. Good evening, citizens and city council. It's time to call the March twenty first meeting two thousand twenty three to order at six P M. And before we get started, I'd like to ask Amy if she'd please read the hybrid meeting ground rules and then call roll.
Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video. View is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on your video view and selecting rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. The virtually raised, raise your hands, to virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone, only press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Brent Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Fred Brink.
Here.
David Fettow.
Here.
May Hayes.
Here.
Kate Moran. John Smart.
Here.
Ken Stoker.
He can is online. You don't know that he can hear us. I'll make note that Ken Stoker is present. And with that, I would ask council member Smart, he'd lead us, pledge lead us in. Stephanie question for you since I don't know that Ken has got. Uh, audio this evening. I don't see a video of him, so I can't see a thumb up or down. Ken, if you're there. Uh, he's calling in. Okay, perfect. All righty. Well, we'll, uh, we'll let you get called in here and then, uh, we'll use your telephone for your audio and we'll just use your name for your face this evening. Thanks for joining us, Ken. Uh, council, the, uh, the agenda is before you. Is there any changes to our agenda this evening? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Motion carried. I didn't hear Ken. I assume. He is good with things as they are. Uh, with that, uh, we, we don't have any presentations this evening and, uh, that does bring us to the consent agenda, which would include the payment of bills. Approve the minutes of the regular meeting, March seventh, two thousand twenty three. Resolution thirteen twenty three to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement regarding revision to co-op. Corporate boundary with Benton County. Uh, resolution fourteen twenty three authorized adoption of proclamation claiming May two thousand twenty three as building safety month. A resolution fifteen twenty three adding community market fees to the master fee schedule. And a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the participation form and settle an agreement with the approved opioid settlement. There's anyone from the audience, which is nobody in house this evening. Uh, anybody virtually that would like to speak to the consent agenda this evening? There's your virtual hand. You do not see anybody virtually other than council member Stoker. Stephanie, do you, or excuse me, Amy, do you?
No, I do not.
With that, uh, council, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. Thank you, council. Uh, and this moves to our first opportunity for public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening. As I mentioned, I do not see anyone in our audience this evening personally. And I assume it's only council member Stoker virtually. Uh, so with that, we will go ahead and move on to ordinances, resolutions, motions, and public hearings. Uh, item eight A is an ordinance to amend the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four budget. And with that, I'll turn the floor over to our finance director, Aaron Glenn, for staff report.
Uh, thank you, Mary Gary. Good evening, council. Uh, this evening, I'm presenting the first, uh, budget amendment of the twenty three, twenty four biennial. Uh, the majority of the items in this amendment are cleanup or true up items. Um, the finance department is about ninety nine percent complete, closing out fiscal year twenty two. And this budget amendment includes a beginning balance true up for each fund. So that is taking and matching our ending twenty twenty two balance to our beginning of twenty twenty three, which is the beginning of our biennial. Uh, also being true up are the budgets for our ongoing projects. We have several projects, mostly in public works. Uh, that began in the previous biennial and continue into the twenty three, twenty four biennial. Uh, when we created the budget last summer and fall, uh, we were only estimating how much we would have spent in that, uh, twenty two and guess guessing estimating, uh, what the budget would be for twenty three. Uh, this amendment, uh, goes through and updates all those projects based on their original budgets. Um, there are two items in this amendment that are not true up or carryover related. And the first one is recognizing, uh, revenue received in prepayment for water system and sewer system development fees in fund four, four, one and four, four, two. Uh, the revenue received was just over six million dollars. Um, the city also has an obligation to pay, uh, excise tax to Washington state for those revenues at one point seven five percent. So this amendment, uh, changes the appropriation for those tax lines. And the second non true up item is in the stormwater utility fund. Um, this amendment uh, had a carryover portion of fifty thousand dollars in grant funds, uh, but we're adding an additional twenty five thousand that's expected from Department of Ecology for our capacity grant. Um, and then, uh, the grant revenue, we anticipate spending that on the street sweeper that was originally ordered in two thousand twenty one, but hasn't been delivered yet. And it has been delayed. Um, there has been an increase to the cost of that street sweeper by about eight thousand dollars. And so this amendment, uh, changes the appropriation of that as well. So we're upping the appropriation by eight thousand, which is not part of a carryover item. So this amendment authorizes an increase in the twenty three, twenty four appropriations in the amount of three million seven hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and sixty one dollars. And recognizes an increase, uh, in total resources. That's both an increase in the beginning balance as well as, uh, the additional revenue. In the amount of sixteen million, six hundred and ninety five thousand, two hundred and thirty two dollars, bringing the revised twenty three, twenty four budget total to a hundred and thirty five million, five hundred and eighty six thousand, fifty one dollars. And staff recommends passing the ordinance.
Thank you, Aaron. Uh, council, may I have a motion, please?
I move to pass ordinance zero four dash two three amending the city of West Richland twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four biennial budget.
Second.
Motion second. Is there anyone from the audience like to speak to this agenda item, which I see none in front of us and councilman Stoker just clarified that he is, uh, hooked up online now and can hear us fine. Uh, and I do not see anyone virtually. Um, Amy, do you see anyone virtually? Other than councilman Stoker?
No, I do not.
Council questions to Aaron. Makes yourself. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you, council. Moving on to item eight B is a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the contract with Mid Columbia Libraries. And again, I'll add Karen to her net staff report this evening.
All right. Thank you. So first item, there was an exhibit A. Um, to go along with the contract that was emailed out later, I also passed out copies to each of you here tonight. So, um, let me know if you didn't get that or have questions. Um, bef- so before you is amendment to the contract between the city and Mid Columbia Library, which also referred to as M C L. Uh, so the city and M C L have had several meetings in the past few years to negotiate an agreement that works for both parties. Funding from the library comes from property taxes, which was, uh, approved by voters in a led levy lid lift back in twenty seventeen. Uh, the big change in this contract is the way the fee paid to M C L for library services is calculated. And that's what you'll see in, uh, that exhibit A is the new formula. Under in comparison, under the current method. So the city pays M C L based on the city's total assessed valuation divided by a thousand multiplied by M C L's levy rate. Uh, the new calculation is on a per capita based contract fee, so it, it kind of evens out the swings in that using a Kenwicks. Uh, per capita rate multiplied by West Richland's, uh, population. Um, the term of the agreement is for six years with the right to terminate the contract at any time within an eighteen month prior written notice. Uh, this proposed agreement will continue to provide benefit to the residents of West Richland as well as make the services a better financial value for the city. Uh, for twenty twenty three, the city would pay a total of five hundred and twenty seven thousand, five hundred and twenty three dollars for the contract. So that's three months at the old rate and then nine months at the, the new way of calculating it. And then for comparison, under the current method of calculating, if we didn't approve the contract and continued paying, the city would be paying five hundred and sixty seven thousand, twenty four dollars. So, uh, we, for just this year, we'd be saving, um, about thirty nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, staff recommends, uh, council approve, approve the new agreement.
Thank you, Aaron. And before we get going, uh, clarification, Amy, uh, make note, please, that Ken Stoker did unmute himself and voted yea for the last agenda item that was addressed. And, uh, I'm gonna ask Ken, uh, will you please see if you can, uh, speak to us? Before we move on, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, I hear you very, very, very softly. So we'll listen real closely or you can turn her up a little bit more.
I will speak right into the microphone as best I can.
Okay, after we get done with our voting, as we move on, we will let you vote individually while we're all quiet as a church mouse. Okay, very good. Uh, thank you. And council, uh, is there anyone before we go on the audience, which we see no one here this evening and nobody virtually the same, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, ask for a motion, please?
Move to authorize mayor to enter in the contract.
Yeah, there it is. I moved to authorize mayor to execute a contract with Mid Columbia Library.
Second.
Motion in second. Also make note that council member Moran is present. I didn't see her come in, excuse me.
I was here before the last vote there.
Fine, all righty. Another quiet as a church mouse. Thank you. Uh, okay, we got a motion in a second. Council questions. I see councilman Bloom has his heart up. Yes, sir.
I just want to jump in and, and recognize that if, if we had joined Mid Columbia Library, actually they would be getting less. Their mileage would have gone down more. So actually, this is a win-win for both the city and Columbia library. So I appreciate your negotiation and leverage on this.
One thing I will make note before getting further through, other than our previous discussion, the way I can't discuss. Uh, the difference is the, we asked for a twelve month option, out option. Uh, they came back and asked for eighteen months, six months. Staff didn't feel that that was anything was a deal killer. Uh, everything moved people way across the board as give and take. So, uh, that's about the only thing that there was a change on. Just wanted to make that verbally from those noticed in our conversations in the past. Council member Moran?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to make sure. So it is six years starting April first of this year. So it goes from April first this year till April first, twenty twenty nine, right?
I was just like trying to make sure that it wasn't December, uh, thirty first. Um, but I believe it is the, uh, April first for six years.
Okay, that's what I was at. Yeah, that's the main thing. I was wondering if it was April to April, not April to December. Thank you.
That's the way that we did it last time. We had an extension. If, or did we go back to a twelve month, first year, January?
No, this last one, the extension, the last, uh, put us at March thirty first, twenty twenty four. For this current contract that we're on. So, but you have to give the one year notice. So it would have been, we would have had to give notice by March thirty first of twenty twenty three to end the contract, March thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Asking as I thought last time we were in contract negotiations, we had an extension. We played it to annual twelve month rotation. I don't know if we, we went to finance director at the time, how, how we did that. So we ended up keeping on that annual rotation.
Yeah, I don't know. I do know that the, the, I don't know, from my point of view, the price changes December thirty first or January first of every year. So that's within the budget cycle.
So I'm reading in the contract, uh, section twelve terms agreement, unless term earlier, this agreement shall end December thirty first, twenty twenty eight.
Thank you so much.
And so.
Perfect. There we go. All right.
Lesson six because it's twenty twenty.
Hey, perfect. Council member is smart.
Oh, picking up on that. So the soonest we could, um, ask to, uh, end the contract would be not right now is what you just said. We have to wait until next, uh, and so is it a year by year? Sorry, I, I when, when can we, when, when will be the first opportunity to bail? That's what I'm asking.
So we could, uh, on April first, we could sign this contract and on April first, technically, I think we could issue a letter. Uh, in eighteen months from now, we would be out of this contract. Am I correct?
Flash Jessica.
Four.
Jessica?
Yes, I would agree with that. So from the date we give notice, eighteen months later, it would terminate.
Regardless of the date. Okay, regardless of date. Okay. Anytime we, we, I think council might make choice to do so. It's eighteen months from the date of no notification.
Okay. So, uh, my, my question though, uh, apart from that is can, is there, can we have a, a discussion or were there, what was the analysis of alternatives? I, I thought that at one point, you know, we, we've continued to extend this contract. And we've talked about other possible alternatives. I know that when we first contracted with M C L, I think it was when we first contracted with them, we had a blue ribbon panel. Um, there were citizens involved. Uh, there were at least three options discussed. Um, are we in a position to, we, did we do that? I don't think we did. And, and are, do we plan to continue to look at alternatives?
Didn't do that. And what the, the effort was obviously it was unsustainable financially. And so we went after it as, how can we get it to be a financially sustainable service that M C L can provide the city of West Richmond? And with this new formula, as the, the analysis was done, as we work out the years, it was sustainable financially. So we continued the services based on that.
So I'm, I'm wondering, uh, if, like, I'd be interested to know, I, I understand the, uh, comparison of, um, what we would have paid this year versus what we are going to pay. That seems pretty straightforward. Um, we're in a position where we continue to build high density homes or housing opportunities. Um, which I presume create less of a, I, I just don't know if that creates more or less of a, um, of an overall city, uh, value like we used to be. So this, this contract used to be based on, on the overall value of the city, right?
Yeah.
And so if we build, but, but now we're basing it on the number of people in the city. So if we build more high density housing, uh, we'll end up with more people and I believe probably less property value.
No, so, uh, Eric can probably correct me, but with a higher density housing, like per square footage, your, uh, value is actually higher. So let's say you're on five acres, your property is worth six hundred thousand, but.
So remember that drawing I did for you, John, that showed one house on a two and a half acre lot versus multiple homes on that lot. We did the analysis. And it shows that when you put more homes on that parcel, your value goes up significantly. So the more homes you squeeze on that lot, whether multifamily or single family, the value of that property goes up.
Okay. Um, and then, so then back to this other, so that's, so that, so you're, you're pretty much, um, assured that this will not increase at a rate higher than, uh, we would have seen otherwise.
Yeah, the, so I, uh, my analysis I did, it does not increase as, uh, fast as it does over the, um, over time. And one of the things with that is, um, is the way it was. So the RSS valuation continued to go up and not just at a nice three percent or steady percent. Sometimes we would get an evaluation of, I think the biggest year I saw in there was like a fourteen percent increase in our valuation. What happens when that? So on the receiving end of that, like, we've kind of talked about the property tax issue. The city is capped at one percent increase. So even if we only receive a hundred thousand dollars that for the homes that exist, the next year we can only receive a hundred and one thousand dollars, even though the assessed valuation may have gone up fifty percent. Or in this case, fourteen. However, so then you take all of that. So M C L is capturing all of that change times their levy rate, but we're not able to capture that on the revenue side. So what this does is it uses the Kennewick per capita rate, which Kennewick is a lot more stable than we are. They're, um, they're a lot bigger. They have a lot more, um, it's a lot more even. So on their per capita rate. Um, it, rather than attaching it to our assessed value, which has been skyrocketing, it, this was a much better way. Um, it does, it's not perfect, but it is a lot more sustainable over the years.
Thank you for that. So it's also true though, that we're expecting a pretty rapid expansion of population here in West Richland. And so, um, I mean, I've been told maybe even be doubling our, our rooftops in the next foreseeable future. Um, so that will roughly double our population perhaps. And uh, so like related to that, I'm wondering if there were opportunities to negotiate additional services provided by M C L. So in other words, I'm not looking forward to paying them twice as much right, uh, you know, in three or four or five, six years as we are paying them now for the same services, uh. And I, I don't know that I don't, from the numbers I've seen, the library is far from tapped out as far as providing all the service they could. In other words, people use the library, but, but nowhere near. It's not, they're now beating down the doors, right? There's, I've been in there a few times and it's scant. I mean, it's valuable, but it's scant number of uses. So, so I'm wondering if we really want to put ourselves in a position where we'll be paying this much, which right now is something on the order of fourteen hundred and fifty dollars per day, rough numbers, okay? Um, to operate this library and maybe in the near future paying twice that. So will there be an opportunity to negotiate for additional services or a second branch? Um, and is any of that in the contract or something we need to think about?
I do know that M C L has had, had conversations with the Richland School District. Uh, looking for potential partnerships with them upon the uh, construction of a new high school, which will eventually come. Uh, M C L has expressed interest in another branch, uh, in West Richland. Obviously, it's not going to be on our dime. So however, they might want to be able to figure that out certainly after then. The, uh, the, the clause that we have in it that gives us an option in eighteen month to terminate the contract. Uh, if we see that we are not being able to sustain uh, the services that we, we have now and want to look at something different in the future. Uh, we have now where before we didn't, they were in contract for the duration. So that is a benefit on our side has been. So yeah, there's, there's always room for, and as far as negotiation, any more services. Uh, there, there isn't anything in the contract that says, you could always ask, but what they ask may be a, a no or else well, yeah, but you're gonna pay me.
Right, right.
Well, those are some of the options that have been done in the past and I know of conversations with M C L. It's a school district and we also haven't been having the exit, we choose to do so at a given time.
Okay. Well, I appreciate those answers. I was, um, hoping for a little more, um, analysis of alternatives. I mean, like gross and gross, uh, significant change alternatives like partnering with Richland or looking for a private library operator or any other mechanism where you know, we might not have to pay almost fifteen hundred dollars a day. Or, uh, maybe it's an immaculate brick and mortar facility, um, which we pay for, uh, for the city in addition to its costs. So I'll remind everyone. And I just, I'm not sure that the, that the, uh, that the construct of our current library is really fitting the needs and is a good business deal for, for our community right now. So I've always been a big supporter of the library. I mean, I had kids a decade ago that were there every, every day practically. Um, times are changing and, uh, so I have a couple, I have those reservations. Um, I just wanted to explain that. So thank you.
Councilman Fettow?
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick clarification. Another option, John, is if we don't prove this contract, we can issue a one year notice today to end services a year from April, will be April first, twenty twenty four. So that's not, I'm saying that we suggest me that. I'm just saying that is the other option that's on this contract is we don't accept this and we keep on current terms and we're a year out.
Right.
Councilman Luke?
I just wanted to clarify my previous, uh, comment and Aaron's comment about, uh, the cap, um, Mid Columbia uh, library is also subject to one percent uh, increase cap. But it wasn't for us. So that's the problem. So, um, so the revenue cap, that's why their levy is point two nine four. Their original levy was forty point four five. So it keeps shrinking like our city's levy been shrinking.
Mayor Pro Tim Bray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, council member Smart, I do appreciate your comments, uh, on this topic. Um, it's a choice that the city has to make. I mean, under our existing contract, we could end it within a year as council member Fettow pointed out. But at the same time, um, we do have the eighteen month window to change the contract here. I think that there's a benefit to going with this contract though, because we're gonna get greater transparency into the library's operations, total circulation, um, uh, direct annual expenditures, you know, they're gonna give us a little bit more insight into how they're operating. So that if in eighteen months, we as council are not satisfied with the execution of the current contract, uh, we can then, you know, make changes or negotiate hopefully changes. But I think it's important that we maintain the library overall. Usage may be down, but it is a valuable asset to the city. And so I would encourage, uh, my fellow council members to support this vote and go with the new contract with the notion that we can change it throughout the life of the contract if we wish.
Thank you, Councilman. I recognize Councilmember Stoker virtually.
Yeah, so hopefully everyone can hear me. Um, you know, I I understand uh Mayor Pro Tim Brink's uh comments as well, and I appreciate that. Um, I do have some struggles with some of the things that have been going on with the library and funding is one of them. So I would hope that we I can entreat the council and the mayor and the rest of the city staff that we don't forget the opportunity in the future to reevaluate this. I mean, I think we've discussed that and we certainly don't want this to go away just because maybe we approve this contract without thinking about what our alternatives are further down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Stoker. Appreciate that. Okay, seeing no other cards up? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign please.
Nay.
Nay.
I got uh Councilman Stoker and Councilman Smart as Dave's. Okay. All right, Amy, got that? Thank you. And with that, no unfinished business this evening. Nor do we have any new business. And this is the opportunity for citizen public comment for a second time this evening. Any one like virtually to address council, raise your virtual hand. And the one person that I saw that was virtually just left the virtuality. Is that correct, Amy? Okay.
That is correct.
Virtuality, that that's the newer in the in in cycle TV every day. Absolutely. Okay, so I see no citizen public comment virtually or in person. So with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to staff council comments and reports. We'll start with senior staff this evening, staff members, they see. We'll start from uh let's go, let's go from right to left this time. Eric.
I wasn't sure if it was your right or mine. Um, thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to uh announce that there is a racing event coming up and just wanted to uh make sure you were all aware of it. The Red Mountain Event Center is going to be hosting the Apple Cup this year. Uh, there is practice races typically that Thursday and Friday before. So the thirtieth and thirty first, uh thirty first will probably have more excitement going on with with the practices going on. And then the first and second of April, it will be the event days. So please come on out, check it out. It's a great event, great opportunity to um test your eardrums and make sure that they're listening very well and uh enjoy the racing event that goes on there. It's a fun time, great event. Uh, brings typically about five thousand people to our community, puts heads in beds and and tushes and restaurants, and it's a great experience for all of us to to have that here in our community. So just wanted to make that announcement and invite everyone out.
I'll throw in a pitch for one of our West Richland residents who owns tumbleweeds. He has these new uh tumbleweeds food truck. It's going to be participating this weekend down there at the waste trash. It comes before the local resident as well as watching the door and that's that church mouse I was talking about earlier.
It's all clear.
Councilmember Slade, or Councilmember Slade, holy smokes. Well, you want to we want to go long meetings now. For Mr. Slade.
Oh, I got a demotion now, no. Um, she gives you give you an update on the bum range, Keen Road Intersection Project that will be starting April tenth. And it will have closures on the uh fourteenth. So what I'm gonna do, we've got a website that council, um I'll send you the public outreach plan that the engineering staff has put together. So you can kind of see what they're doing. Uh, they've worked with Stephanie, there'll be utility bill insert. Uh, last week Drew was on Kona giving an update. Uh, K E P R will be here Thursday to talk to me about the project. Um, and all sorts of notices going out, but um so people will not be surprised. Um, they may be not like it, but they don't know about it. So alls I can say is the first weekend uh that weekend of April fourteenth, that intersection will be totally shut down. All sorts of detours. Um, and then from there, we'll go to phase one where they're constructing the south half of the intersection and then the north half. So anyway, I will send that to council, give you the links to the website and all the stuff so you can see it. But I just realized that the information's going out, emergency dispatch, school district, transit, they're all getting the same stuff. And unfortunately, there's not a lot of great options. It will impact people uh for a good six months. So it'll get worse before it gets better. And the other uh item is Ben Franklin Council of Government. Uh, they're in the process of updating their bylaws and policies. Kate, thank you for passing our wishes to slow slow the roll and and allow uh TAC to review it and provide comments, which uh they were successful at the board level. So that will come back to the TAC um the first week of April. So I've got scheduled to review it and then meeting with the mayor and you, Kate, to go over those comments to let you know how the TAC meeting goes and then that we're prepared uh for the board meeting. But uh initial glance at the changes that have been put in there uh look like a good step, but I'll go through all that and I'll report back to you, Mayor, and Kate, I'll get you that. So that was that for today.
Chief Gregor.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Council. Um, I want to say thanks to everybody that came out to Polers um swear in the other day. That was pretty awesome. I want to thank all the supporters and everybody that's uh gonna help take care of him the rest of his life and are dedicated to that cause. Um, as I promised, I give you guys uh the updates on the laws and how they're um proceeding. So as you guys know, the WASP priorities as well as the the mayor's priorities for the legislature um to this time around, the as far as the criminal justice stuff was the pursuit law and the Blake law have both passed the Senate. So that's good news, um moving in a positive direction. I'm not going to go through all the other bills that failed, but the other ones that we were keeping an eye on basically were stopped in their tracks. So that's where we're at with that. So we're on the second half of approval. Um, you know, as of right now. So unless you have any questions, thanks.
Hey, Gene, appreciate it. Uh, Councilman Bloom has a question for you.
I just questioned, uh, there was a recent uh Supreme Court ruling and on eh on enforcing fair rules in Seattle. It was worth reading because it sort of implied that carrying a gun and being in uniform was threatening to individuals. So uh if you if you haven't seen it, I will forward it over to you.
That'd be great. I have not seen that.
Was it's scarier than hell. It was a it was a four, five decision. And uh I I just from an enforcement standpoint, I saw I mean, nothing about the fair enforcement, but it was very woke, so to speak.
Thank you.
Stephanie.
Um, I just wanted to announce to council that the April fourth council meeting has been canceled due to numerous numerous vacations by staff. Thank you.
Council, schedule your vacation around that time. That's advanced on. Yeah, we've got plenty of time to get it on the book. Hey, Councilmember Moran.
Thank you. Uh, and yes, as Mr. Slade mentioned at the last Ben Franklin Council of Governments meetings, I it sounded like at first we were going to go through and approve them and then I had brought up, hey, uh, I thought that everybody else had been asked, and I know I had been asked by our TAC members to wait until TAC was able to review it. So I'm glad that we were able to slow that down so that TAC can fully review that and give the input. I'm looking forward to hearing it. I don't think that there should be many big issues with it, but again, looking forward to hearing your thoughts on that, please. Um, I will say that as soon as the bylaws are able to be approved, then we will also be able to vote for the uh executive board for Ben Frank Council of Government. It's kind of been waiting until these. And I am very proud to say that the nominating committee has uh nominate or will be nominating me for the second vice chair, which is a one year term. So hopefully being able to be on that and make sure that West Richland, uh, it is kind of interesting who the nominating board uh is wanting to put on there because we've got uh from Port of Pasco, Vicky Gordon for the chair uh from Ben Franklin Transit, Rachelle Glazier as the first vice chair, myself for the second vice chair, and then Mayor Lee Barrow from Cornell as the at large. And it seems like especially with the prior chair being on the executive, which would be uh County Commissioner Peck. It's a little Franklin County heavy, which not fan of it being that way, but it is what it is. So hopefully that'll go through. Um, and then that meeting for Ben Franklin Council of Governments is April twenty first. There is also the Tri-Cities Mobility Action Council is having a Pasco walk on the twenty third at noon. So if anyone needs that information, please let me know. I can pass it on to Stephanie and Amy uh as necessary. And then the Tri-City Mobility Action Group is meeting virtually on the twenty fourth as well. And that is all that.
Councilmember Blue.
The Yakima Basin Fish and Wildlife Recovery Board needs a citizen willing to go tromp through the woods up and down the valley to evaluate proposals that will be coming in this summer. Um, I wrestled somebody to do it. It's a it's a approximately a five day commitment over basically starting in May through July. Um, what I would ask staff to you know, if you have individuals that are into fishing, like to be in the outdoors, it's an opportunity to go all the way up the Yakima River and look at projects. And it's it's not a tremendous commitment, but it's much like there's a TAC that does an evaluation of the projects and the citizen committee decides they pick which ones we fund. And so it's handing out three, maybe six million dollars of funding. So talk to your staff and please, if you got a name, send it over to me. I'll forward it on. I got one. We have two openings. I'd like Ben County to be represented, you know, on the the committee. So thank you.
Councilmember Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to say we had the reopening of the West Richardson Senior Center on March fourteenth. It was a great turnout. Huge thank you to the mayor and Mayor Pro Tim both showed up for the event. We had the police department there. We had the fire department there. We had city employees there. Um, and we ended up having fifty seven um people that showed up. Um, a lot of the seniors were ones that had never been part of the senior center before. They saw it in the newsletter and everything. So um, really turned out great and we had um twenty six um new seniors sign up for membership. So it was it was really fun. And then they got the ones that could stayed after and stuffed Easter eggs for the Easter egg hunt that's coming up. And um it was just really exciting to see the joy on their face that um they got to get out at their house and the senior center is back open and we let them know of all the events that are going on, like um we'll have bingo again, we'll have uh Funko or what it's called, we'll have art class, we'll have um exercise class. So um, it was really um really moving to see um the crowd come out and they're really excited to bring this senior center back around and be part of it. So thank you to everybody because they were really honored that you know, the police spoke, you know, Gregos spoke and he and and they were just like, is he gonna come every time? I said, well, we'll make him or somebody's gonna come every time. And then the then in the fire guys talked and they just felt really um part of the community. So I just wanted to share that with you guys that everybody that showed up and and what we're doing at the senior center, I think is really a blessing for this community because we owe a lot to them um for what they've done. And then um I know we're working on the plan for um changing the name of the senior center to the Bill Shane um senior center and um more of that will come. But at that point, we then we'll have a re grand opening of the senior center and it'll be on a Saturday and we'll do a barbecue and and invite everybody. Um, the other thing that's going to be exciting down there is we're going to open a pantry down at the senior center. And so we're going to put that on by Operation We Care. Is going to put that on and then we're going to go around in the community from sixty second to Gross Cup. And we're going to go to the doors because we know there's a lot of seniors there that are in need and might not be able to get out. And so we're going to start a pantry and um have food that we can take out to them. And if they need it or they can come to the senior center and pick it up and stuff. So a lot of exciting things are going on and I really appreciate the city and the involvement. And we're going to do some paintings. I'm working with Roscoe on that and just liven it up. So um, thank you to everybody that was part of that, and I hope you continue to be part of it and support um the seniors. And then the other thing I just want to say, Tom, that the polar swearing in was wonderful. Um, a lot of people there, the room was packed and the whole taking his paw and swear in and um it it was just really moving and I think it's going to be a huge um huge asset to this whole community. Polar is a great dog and I think it's going to be wonderful. So great job. I know you guys gone through a lot um to get him here, but so um just want to say congratulations on that. So thank you.
Thank you, man.
Mayor Pro Tim Bray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the Association of Washington Cities uh offers an employee benefit trust program, uh which the city's a member uh with regard to medical insurance and so forth. Uh, A W C also promotes a well city program. And I'm excited to know that West Richland is one of the cities that earned recognition from the Association of Washington Cities as being a well city, which reduces the medical premiums that have to be paid. I don't know the exact amount, but I've heard estimates it's over ten thousand dollars uh per year. And we are one of a hundred and twelve cities to earn that award, but it's really due to the uh the hard work of the members of the uh well committee here within the city, which is chaired by Jessica Bates, also features uh Selena Smathers in there, uh Brandon Dawkins, Don Claggis, Jeremy Gwynne, Rebecca Warner, and of course, our own city clerk, Stephanie Held. So uh just hats off to the staff that are working to promote the well city program and earning some benefits in terms of cost of medical insurance. Last thing I'll mention. Um, this Thursday, I will be attending the Friends of Scouting Leadership Breakfast, just held annually at the Pasco Red Line at zero seven hundred. Nice and early. I think the mayor's going to join me for that. But um looking forward to doing that. Uh, they have several hundred people attend that every year. So looking forward to being part of that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And uh just to add to that, since we're going to be there at the Boy Scouts, it's a great opportunity for us to plug the uh the Eagle Scout projects for the new signings that we're going to be needing at the senior center. And anything else we might have going on and within the city. So Roscoe, if you got a short list for me of different projects that didn't get done because of COVID that came up, uh, let me know and uh we'll uh we'll see if we can score an Eagle Scout project. And if you if we can pull that off, we'll even get Steve Larch and who's going to be our keynote speaker uh to sign the uh sign the sign for us when when we when we break ground on the Yeah, it should be a great event other than getting up old dark thirty to get over there. It should be good. All righty. So you know what else this evening, council, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at six forty nine. Have a great evening. Please say.